So we're going to move on to announcements and presentations under item four. First one up is item A. Work on the wildfire mitigation project has commenced in the Crestmore Canyon area. The first of three phases of the work in the canyon began on July 22nd. All three phases are expected to be completed by fall 2020. This work includes the creation of defensible space between open space areas and neighboring residential properties, which is essential to improve a home's chance of surviving a wildfire. This work also serves as a preliminary fire safety effort. The structures, while with long-term plans for the further mitigation are developed. Please contact the San Bruno Fire Department at area code 650-616-7096. That's 616-7096 with any questions or comments. Was there anything else for City Manager on that or just? City Manager?
Sorry, we were on mute. No, Mr. Mayor, that's everything.
Okay, let's move on to item B. If you don't complete your 2020 census, you won't be seen, you won't be heard. And our nation's, as you know, it happens once every 10 years. And it is still open and it has been extended due to the COVID situation. So please fill out yours today at my2020census.gov or by calling 844-330-2020. That's 844-330-2020. Now I'm going to move on to item C and ask the City Manager to take that, please.
Sure, I just want to announce to the community, some members may remember that the property owner of 1,000 San Mateo Avenue, that is the former Sky Park facility, approached the council a few months ago with the option to look into a potential November 2020 ballot measure to increase allowable heights on that property above ordinance 1283. We have currently received a property owner termination for that reimbursement agreement that the city council authorized. The property has been sold to a large commercial tenant and the prior property owner and the current property owner no longer want to proceed with that potential ballot item. And so we will be awaiting contact from the new property owner on their intentions for the property.
Okay, thank you for that. Item D, the regular city council meeting for August 11th, 2020 is canceled. That's a normal practice and there will be the meeting, I believe it's August 23rd, that will be our regularly scheduled one. And also as I'm going through these, why don't we go ahead and ask my colleagues as I'm going through these very quickly, but were there any questions in regards to the mitigation or the announcement of the property? I'm sure there's not more sentences. If there is, if you can let me know. Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask staff, was there any type of notification went out to the residents in the Crestmore neighborhood regarding the fire mitigation work that was being done?
Yes, Melissa, will you bring in the fire chief for that notification?
Yes, I'm doing so right now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So in regards to notification for the Crestmore Canyon fire mitigation work, we had done a multitude of venues to be able to provide notification to the residents. We did a direct flyer that was placed on all the residents along Crestmore Canyon and Quail Point, the initial starting point where we started this fuel mitigation project. We had done all three social media platforms. We use Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram for notifications as well, and some door-to-door notifications as well.
Okay, so there was just, was there a door-to-door notification that went around the perimeter of that property that would have been into people's backyards?
Exactly, the properties off of Quail Point and the initial stuff in Crestmore, the initial phases of, we didn't do every single resident because every single resident wouldn't have been affected. I can't hear you.
You're muted.
I'm hitting it back and forth, I'm sorry. Will there be additional notification for those residents to kind of live in the area? Because, you know, majority of our residents aren't on social media and they don't, they don't log into council meetings as we think they may. But so it would be really nice just to know that they know what's going on.
Absolutely, we wanted to get some boots on the ground to get some work started. So we noticed the initial wave of the residents in the primary spot where we're going to be working, but we're going to have about a two to three week window coming up here before the next phase of work. And the plan is to actually notice every one of those with a mail piece from the fire department as well.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Absolutely.
Okay, not seeing?
Oh.
Yes?
One follow-up comment, I was just going to say, City Manager, maybe if it's something in your newsletter about the work, because now it's great that all this is happening, but somebody says, why live over here, what about my neighborhood? And I live over here, what about my neighborhood? And so there's those questions are starting to fall.
Absolutely, Councilmember Davis, that is planned. And in the July issue, we will have an article on the wildfire mitigation project that will articulate the plan for the entire $3 million that was funded by PNE and talk about this first phase and then the phase that Ari mentioned, Phase Two, that will begin in a few weeks.
Okay. And when we say funded, that there's a little more behind that, but I'm sure that'll be explained in that it's not that they just were generous in a sense and just gave it its, by staff and us going and asking the federal judge in which to convert probation hours for the offense that they were convicted of, to be utilized to help that community and neighborhood mitigate those situations that they've lived with for a long time.
Item E, receive update on COVID-19 response effort. Jennifer D.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. My name is Jennifer Dianos and I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. I'm here this evening representing our Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team and will provide a general update on COVID-19 to you. As you can see from the agenda on the screen, the presentation this evening will include a snapshot of San Mateo County statistics similar to what was presented at the last city council meeting, an update on the current status and where we are now, as well as local resources available to our community. I'll start this evening with our San Mateo County statistics. The statistics on the screen are provided by the County of San Mateo Health Department. In San Bruno, the county reports that there are 225 positive COVID cases, an increase of approximately 40 cases since the last report to you on July 14th. Countywide, there are a total of 5,198 positive cases as of yesterday, July 27th, and a total of 118 deaths. The last time I reported to the city council on July 14th, there were 114 deaths and increased up four deaths over the last two weeks. You will see in the category titled Death by Age Group, a majority of the deaths are in the 80 to 89 and 90 plus age ranges. The positive cases, however, appear to be mostly in the 20 to 49 age ranges. The state uses the county statistics to evaluate counties and their COVID-19 containment. The statistics are monitored in three-day increments, meaning that the state identified categories must fall within the prescribed guidelines for three days or else they will be subject to further restrictions and closures, which I will detail in the next few slides. The monitoring categories include stable hospitalization of COVID individuals, testing positive over the past seven days, the number of cases per population, minimum testing requirements, hospital ICU bed search, and ventilator availability. That brings me to the current status and where we are now. But before the transition, I want to mention that the county health statistics can all be accessed through the county or the county health websites, primarily at smchhealth.org. There's a variety of data available for general consumption. As previously reported, our county remains aligned to the state's resilience roadmap. San Mateo County is the only Bay Area county that remains off the monitoring list at this time. However, given the statistics I mentioned earlier, our county has potential of being added to the monitoring list and staff suspects that that action is looming. As previously mentioned, according to the state, counties that have remained on the county monitoring list for three consecutive days are required to shut down the following businesses by category or activity unless they can be modified to operate outside or by pickup, and those include gyms and fitness centers, places of worship and cultural ceremonies, offices for non-critical infrastructure sectors, personal care services, hair salons and barber shops, as well as shopping malls. If, and I highlight the word if, the county is added to the monitoring list, you can expect a message to be sent through the emergency notification system, that's SMC Alert, which will notify our county's residents of the change. There's a link to SMC Alert at the end of this presentation that can be used to register for the notification system if you're not already registered. The PIO team is also prepared to help get the information out. And it's important to note that the City of San Bruno Emergency Operations Center continues to operate and regularly needs to ensure support to our community for information, programming, and other emergency response needs. In line with our statistics, San Mateo County Health Officer Dr. Scott Morrow issued a new health statement on July 20th, which highlights three main points that I'm going to read for you. First is the virus appears remarkably and even surprisingly transmissible. The fundamental structural failures of the U.S. economy are being laid bare by the pandemic, including economic struggle and impact for those that live paycheck to paycheck. And third, complacency being another major factor enabling the spread of COVID-19. At the close of the statement, Dr. Morrow reminds residents that they should not have gatherings outside of their immediate households, should use facial coverings or masks extensively and adhere to social distancing. The full statement is available for your viewing on the county health website. Again, that website is smchhealth.org. Tonight, I share resources with you that are available to our residents, and the resources I mentioned this evening are mostly available through our county, County of San Mateo. There are several other resources that are available through the state and other agencies that are offering services to those in need. So I do not want to limit what resources are available as this presentation only highlights a few of them. I'll start with eviction moratoriums. For those that are economically impacted as a result of COVID-19 and unable to pay rent for their place of residence, the county has extended an emergency moratorium on eviction for non-payment of rent through August 31st, 2020. The temporary countywide moratorium on evictions from residential units may provide temporary relief during the pandemic. Information about this and landlord-tenant rights are all available through the county website, smchdub.org, and the Department of Housing. Similarly, the City of San Bruno has taken action for a moratorium on commercial evictions. The city initially adopted a commercial eviction moratorium, which was effective until May 31st, and was then re-adopted extending that moratorium. There's an item on the consent calendar this evening for your consideration to further extend the urgency ordinance of the temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by small business commercial tenants impacted by COVID-19. Upon your consideration and approval this evening, the moratorium on commercial evictions will be extended through September 30th, 2020. Also, on economic relief, there is a childcare relief fund that was established through the county. The new childcare relief fund serves two goals, to help service providers remain open and to ensure working families have access to childcare. The program offers licensed childcare centers and family childcare homes and opportunity for grant funding with priority funding for providers who serve low-income families. As you can see on the screen and in this PowerPoint presentation, the program implementation process will begin by early September, at which point applications will be collected, reviewed, and grant funding will be distributed through the county. More information on this program should be forthcoming through the county. In addition, it's worth noting that the City of San Bruno is offering a variety of virtual camps this summer in case you're looking for something to keep your children busy with during the summertime. These are all worth checking out and are available under the Recreation Program on the city's website, and that's sanbruno.ca.gov. Small business support has been a major focus that we've navigated through these COVID-19 waters. There are resources and programs available through our local San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, SAMCITA, and a variety of other agencies. But most recently, a webinar was hosted by the County Health Office and SAMCITA as a joint effort regarding the signage requirements for businesses while in operation, including a self-certification placard, social distancing protocol, and a health and safety plan. Signage is available for print on the county health website as well as frequently asked questions or FAQs for business categories that have regulatory compliance through the state. On the screen, you'll see the self-certification placard, which should be displayed in business windows alongside the protocols to easily demonstrate or acknowledge their compliance to the general public, so it's easily identifiable. This next slide you'll see should look familiar. It was presented during the last city council update, however, the information still stands true and is available to the public. Pre-COVID-19 testing is available in San Bruno this week and next. That's Wednesday, July 29th tomorrow, and next Wednesday, August 5th, both from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 975 Speed Lane. Registration is required and fills up quickly, so if you're a family member interested in getting tested for COVID-19, please visit projectbaseline.com/covid19 to sign up for the San Bruno site or consider alternative sites in our county if San Bruno registration is already full. This process is for pre-testing, however, testing may also be available through your private healthcare provider, which could be used as an alternative option to explore. And while testing for COVID-19, finding out that you or a family member tests positive for COVID-19 can be stressful, and particularly if you're facing the loss of a loved one due to COVID-19. American Red Cross offers a virtual family assistance center, which provides information and resources during times as such. Immediate emotional support, including the availability of services in a variety of languages, are available by calling 833-492-0094. And by connecting with the American Red Cross online at redcross.org, which is linked in this presentation for future reference and convenience, you have access to volunteers that can help navigate other resources to get what you need when you need them, including emotional support for behavioral health, virtual care, and health services. The next slide here is a friendly reminder to properly dispose your personal protective equipment, also known as PPE. I think I'm not only speaking for myself when I say this, but oftentimes, unfortunately, I observe a disposable mask or glove on the ground while I'm outside walking. Each time I make that observation, I would like to believe that someone did not intentionally throw their PPE on the ground to litter, but possibly lost it. Please remember to protect yourself and also our environment by making sure you properly and responsibly dispose your PPE in a safe manner or use the option of cloth masks, which are reusable and sustainable. And for those of you that have not already seen the county's comeback campaign, please see the heart image on the screen and in the presentation. The county is in the process of rolling out a comeback campaign to help stop the spread of COVID-19 with three simple reminders, which we often see, wash your hands, wear a mask, and social distance. Their slogan is "Our Comeback Depends on All of Us" and reiterates the need for us to come together to slow and ultimately stop the spread of COVID-19. You will soon see several state campaigns with a similar message on TV and on the radio, and the message is clear that we all need to do our part. And lastly, as a reminder this evening, please stay connected with us as information develops with the monitoring list or any other information. Our PIO team uses a variety of methods to get information out to the public, and social media and the SMC Alert Emergency Notification System are great resources to help get information out quickly. If you or someone you know are not already connected, please encourage them to do so. And also, all of the websites and phone numbers that I referenced in the presentation have hyperlinks, and they're all available on our city website, on the council agenda page, as well as our coronavirus page. And with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time this evening. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Councilmember Mason?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I actually had a question about the canyon mitigation, but since we're on this, I felt you will jump in. I just wanted to ask two questions. One is around, what is the outreach and what's the update around the Hispanic community? I know on the county call last week, it was evidence that I believe they make up 25% of San Mateo County, but over 50% of all COVID positive cases are being impacted, and we have quite a large population here in San Bruno. So I'm curious to know what outreach is being done, or is the City of San Bruno doing anything to try to make sure that communications are in Spanish? That's my first question. Do you want me to ask the second one, or do you want to, should I let you answer first?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mason. So the city did establish a COVID-19 section of our website that is fully translatable in Spanish as well as a number of other languages, as well as our entire site. With regard to the COVID-19 mellor that we melled out while we did not mail an English and Spanish version, we did develop a fully Spanish version of the mellor. Early on during COVID-19, there was a 211 established, which I believe is still active, and they have services in multiple languages, including Spanish. And the county has an entire outreach effort, as you mentioned, geared toward the Hispanic community, given the significant positive rates within the Hispanic community in San Mateo County.
Yeah, I think as of last Wednesday's call, they were working on one. I don't know that they've announced what it is yet. I did contact the county and I did send them our video, thinking maybe they can do a similar video on the Spanish-speaking channels. But I don't think that there's a strategy yet that I've heard. So if there, I guess tied to that, is there any way that we could provide our social media posts that are related to COVID, not all posts, but related to COVID safety? Could we have those snippets available in Spanish as well?
We can look at, we can look into doing that and adding that as an augmentation.
Okay, thank you. And then I did just want to comment that we, as of our last city council meeting, we had not received a list of all of the businesses that received funding, and since then, I wanted to thank, thank you for providing them to us. And I was really happy to see some of our small mom-and-pop shops like ViBo Music, Takeria San Bruno. There was another, the Family Dentistry in San Bruno, My Busy Town, these all got these grants. I was surprised to see Lucky Food Express. Is Lucky Food Express considered a small business for the purposes of this grant?
Councilmember, I don't have details on their submission and application to the San Mateo County Strong Fund, so I don't have any.
Okay, I can send an email to the person who sent it directly. Thank you. Otherwise, thank you for all the work you're doing around COVID.
Any other questions by council? Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. So I guess this is a good opportunity to talk about the homeless encampment? Or no? Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, it's the next item on the thing, so I will wait.
Okay, any other?
Can I back up if we're, if we're going to move up? Because I just had a question about the canyon.
Sure.
Okay. My only question is, is there a schedule that will be provided to the council to make sure that we meet these three phases? Like, is there a timeline that will, that will be provided in writing so that we know the metrics that we're trying to meet to stay within the budget?
I would think, I know we have to bring the chief back in, but I'm sure, Chief, whatever you're sending out to the community on the phases, that can also be provided to council and the senior leadership team, correct?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, we have a detailed schedule. It's pending court approval currently, but once that's established, we'll get that out to you as soon as we can.
Right. And in addition, there are a couple of different components of the $3 million project. What the fire chief is referring to is the 3C contract with the California Conservation Corps, and I believe two council meetings ago, the city council approved that contract and submission to the court for reimbursement. It's approximately $600,000 with funding to do fire mitigation around the entire mouth of the canyon each year. And so that $600,000 amount is enough for five years. And so we are acting this year on a two-phase plan. Phase one begun and was just completed, and then phase two, the city attorney will be submitting documents to the court for reimbursement and approval, and that will begin, as the fire chief said, within two to three weeks. The other phases that involve other fire mitigation enhancements in the county are still pending development and require a CEQA California Environmental Act clearance process, and the planning for that is still ongoing, and so we do not have a detailed schedule for that at this time.
And I do want to thank the chief too, because obviously, moving on the three Cs because of the CEQA not being required, but moving forward on that so that that can be initiated was appreciative, thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Hi, apologize. I actually did have a question, and it's actually kind of an important question. You know, a number of the counties are actually starting to put in enforcement of violation with not wearing a mask. I'm not sure if the staff has heard anything about the county going in that direction. I know we as a city cannot institute that because we don't actually have a public health officer. But we know, I mean, there's a lot of studies that show that masks really do help, and seeing that we're teetering on our numbers in terms of increases, and I'd hate to be on that watch list again and see the businesses close up, is there a potential that that can be coming to our county as well?
Councilmember Davis, I'm not aware of any conversations at the county at this point to do a countywide fine or penalty for masks. There are actually two mask orders that are in effect in our county. One is a statewide order that was issued by the governor, and then the other is a county order. There are some nuances, but it essentially encourages masks to be worn at all times, in outdoors, when you're within six feet of each other, as well as indoors. There are a number of exemptions and caveats to those recommendations, and some of them actually make enforcement almost personally impossible. For example, walking is considered exercise and walking outside when you're not within six feet of another person or not within, or outside of six feet of someone within your household, you technically do not, the guidance no longer applies. So it sort of makes enforcement challenging, but there is both county and state guidance on wearing masks.
Okay, I think it was Contra Costa County that just was added to the list, as well as Napa and Marin County, I believe. But, I mean, for those of you who don't know or experienced this or have family members, when it hits, it hits quick and people go quick. We're continuing to see and hear people who are getting it, family members who are currently suffering, and reach the maximum where, you know, their capacity to continue to breathe on their own is not possible. So, I mean, we as a community need to keep each other safe and residents safe, and we know that the numbers are increasing in the valley, and people travel, people are traveling more. So I just highly encourage our residents to all please wear a mask and to encourage those who are not, to educate them. And you can't tell anybody what to do, but to help educate, but it's, the numbers are growing and the, I know it doesn't seem like a lot, and I'm so happy to hear the numbers that you presented, Melissa. And by the way, excellent presentation. And by the way, excellent presentation. But numbers throughout California are increasing and they're hitting California pretty hard.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. Update on Forest Lane Homeless Encampment, City Manager. All right, one second, getting the PowerPoint set up. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council and the public at home. Javon Grovan, City Manager, and I will give a brief presentation and update on the Forest Lane Homeless Encampment. And why don't we begin, why don't we begin with a little background? So the west, the, sorry, we're getting a little feedback here locally, that'll be taken care of. The encampment is located at the western edge of Forest Lane Park. And its current configuration has been in existence since early March, just before the start of the shelter and place order. The encampment in question, the one located on the far western edge of Forest Lane Park, has approximately one to three occupants that fluctuates, but it's also frequented by other individuals experiencing homelessness. And so the community may very well see more than three occupants there at a given time during the day or in the late night hours. The encampment is located currently on property owned by two agencies, both Caltrans, they're at the entrance to 380, and the city of San Bruno, just at that western portion of Forest Lane Park. And increasingly, there has been calls for service and complaints for a variety of items, debris in the roadway, public disturbances, and various public health and safety concerns, and not to mention a significant accumulation of trash that we will talk about shortly. Next, I just want to let the community know about some of the services and outreach efforts that have taken place by both county agencies and the city of San Bruno. And on this slide, I provide two high-level examples. One is what we commonly refer to as the HOT Team. It's our homeless outreach team here in San Mateo County. The vendor and provider for that is a company by the name of Life Moves. It is a countywide resource, but also here in San Bruno, we have a dedicated homeless outreach worker that is funded by Measure K from Supervisor Dave Pines' district funds. And so for this particular encampment, there have been 66 visits since March 1st, providing services, both coordinated entry assessments, and that is the county's process for coordinated entry into all of the permanent housing resources. There's a prioritization process and there are certain criteria. And the first thing that our outreach workers or our police department does is make a referral to the coordinated entry system, and Life Moves has the ability to do that intake right out in the field. And so they get people in the system. Next is they provide short-term shelter, not just your typical shelter, but other short-term housing options. And during COVID-19, housing vouchers have been made available and offered to members of this encampment. Medical services, there is a street medical team that has come out to this encampment, as well as mental health services and other, what we typically call wraparound services to support all of the various issues that may cause someone to become homeless. The HOT Team also has within their toolbox a category that is commonly referred to as immediate aid. They provide food, hygiene kits, medical assessments, can do referrals, clothing, blankets, and other new items needed for really some immediate on-the-spot assistance. And at a high level, I want to let the community know that there's been some success stories from this very encampment. And so two individuals were provided and went into hotel vouchers, and one individual has been permanently housed from this encampment. And anyone that's familiar with homeless outreach knows that it is intensive outreach. It sometimes takes dozens and sometimes hundreds of contacts before someone unveils themselves of the services. And it's truly mission work and work that takes time to build down, to build that trust and break down some barriers to have people avail themselves of services. And sometimes people choose not to for a variety of reasons. Next, our police department has a Support Services Bureau, as well as our Patrol Division. And to this very encampment, there have been over 100-plus visits since the shelter-in-place order since March 17th. And so an encampment that is the largest encampment in the city and requiring significant attention. Trash and debris removals. So to this, at this date, the city has conducted approximately six full-scale cleanups of the encampment. And there is an increasing amount of debris, both in the roadway and on city property and on Caltrans property. And the images you see there from the last cleanup that was completed on last Thursday, July 23rd, and what you're seeing there is two weeks' worth of accumulation. And right now, we are currently have entered a bi-weekly schedule, having previously been on a roughly monthly schedule for cleanups. But there's a significant accumulation of debris that occurs, and the city certainly recognizes the quality of life impacts that this poses on users of the park and general residents of our community, and certainly the neighbors right near this encampment. County services for the unsheltered population. So as a city, we partner with the county, and the county Human Services Agency is the lead agency for providing wraparound services for homelessness in San Mateo County. And I just want to update the, provide a quick highlight to the community on some of those services. So we talked a little bit about HOT Team, but they, those are the individuals that go out and assess and work with encampments. There's street medicine and healthcare for the homeless. There is integrated medicated assistance treatment, commonly referred to as IMAT, and that is treatment for substance abuse disorders. And it's a, it's a treatment that really begins with a progressive approach to address both substance abuse by both behavioral and medical interventions, a program that is having success at the county. The next group shown there in green are core services, core service agencies. And in San Mateo County, there are eight core service agencies that provide food, housing assistance, short-term rental assistance, deposit assistance, mortgage payment assistance to help those that may be approaching entering homelessness, hopefully to avoid homelessness and to help those to exit homelessness by providing deposit assistance. And they also provide utility bill assistance to help low-income people pay their utility bills and avoid entering into homelessness for financial reasons. And there are eight areas around the county, and these eight agencies, the county contracts for, and residents of San Bruno can avail themselves of all of those services. And at the bottom there, there in gray are emergency shelters. And again, during COVID-19, more emergency temporary shelter options have been made available in the way of hotel vouchers. And there's a recent program from the state that is providing counties with money to purchase hotel sites and convert those hotels into shelter for the homeless, and the county is looking into that program and will be exploring an application. The next slide, just wanted to talk a little bit about the increase in services available to our homeless population during COVID-19. There's been an increase in homeless prevention and emergency assistance to prevent new entries into homelessness. We've talked a little bit about the short-term temporary assistance. There's a, the county is maintaining their focus on increasing exits to homelessness. There are a variety of different ways that individuals can exit homelessness. Sometimes it is permanent housing placement, short-term housing, or even a homework bound program where there's money provided to help individuals return to their family that may be located in other areas. There's additional rehousing assistance and support programs, and what that typically refers to is rapid rehousing. If someone enters homelessness, there's a program where they can be provided with immediate assistance to have them, to help them be rehoused, to prevent them from becoming homelessness and turning into, and developing more challenges from systemic homelessness. The county collaborates across departments and across cities to reinforce the need for affordable housing, leveraging funds like our Affordable Housing Trust Fund with money available at the county to provide new affordable housing. And the county continues to prioritize new housing units for homelessness and special needs population. The one thing I also want to say about COVID-19, and the public and certainly the public around the Forest Lane Encampment will remember, is that the city mailed out a COVID-19 guide to all residents in San Bruno. And within that, we talked about homelessness and COVID-19. And we said a few things. We said, one, the shelter in place applies to both the housed and the unhoused, and that is true. And there's also CDC guidance that encourages cities to keep homeless encampments in place and suggests that removing homeless encampments may not be in the best interest of the public health. However, I want to make that clear that that is not a prohibition against removing encampments that pose a significant public health and safety risk. And so we are currently in the process of documenting the significant public health and safety concerns with this encampment. And now I want to turn to next steps. The city intends to continue our extensive outreach efforts with the goal of having individuals in this encampment accept and avail themselves of the variety of assistance that has been offered, both temporary assistance, permanent placement, and the wraparound services that we've talked about. In addition, there is the immediate aid that the HOT Team provides, and we will continue to provide those. With regarding abatement of this particular encampment, it does present a significant public health and safety concern, and the city has begun the process to initiate an abatement of this particular encampment due to the unique challenges that are arising from this encampment. But I want to be clear, this is not a full removal of all homeless encampments in the area. We are addressing the specific health and safety concerns posed by this encampment through this process. And as I said there, and it's noted up there, there is an increasing amount of trash and debris. And right now, we are on a bi-weekly schedule just to keep the level of debris in the roadway and debris in the encampment at a moderately acceptable level. We will continue to address the quality of life concerns, and we will continue our partnership with other county agencies, both Life Moves and Caltrans. Should the public have a concern? The best avenue is SB Response. Submit a service request on SB Response for any non-emergency item. Staff does track all service requests and responds to them. I know sometimes individuals like to send emails, and that is one way to submit a service request, but sometimes that actually delays the entry of that service request into the dispatch system because that email needs to be received and then put in to the dispatch system. If a resident puts a request in SB Response, that is the fastest way to have a service request addressed. In particular, with this encampment, what the community should know is, your city is well aware of the situation there, and we are diligently working at this, at this very complex and challenging issue. And we know that it has created quality of life impacts on the neighborhood, and we are progressing through the necessary steps to address those quality of life issues while also being compassionate, offering services, and again, hopeful that the members of this encampment will avail themselves of those services. And I want to close with a video that was developed in-house by our city staff and a police officer, John Hampton, who were diligently on this video to really articulate to the community what goes on when we are doing the intensive outreach and an encampment cleanup. And so the video you're going to see is from the cleanup that occurred just last Thursday, and as we drive that, it should pop up shortly.
If there's one thing I want people to do is, please don't pass judgment. Anyone watching this video, please don't pass judgment on a person just because they're homeless. Too many times, people get the stigma that just because someone's homeless is that they are a drunk, or they're hiring a kite, or that they have incapacitated mental issues that they can't take care of themselves. We have to personalize that and remember that these are people. These are people that are down on their luck.
Hi, my name is Scott Rogie, and I'm a police officer with the city of San Bruno. I am currently assigned at the Support Services Division and have been employed with the San Bruno Police Department since 1992. A couple incidents, there was divorce, once there was a death in the family, people lost benefits, the recession hit, and a lot of people became down on their luck and became homeless. Those words might not echo very far for someone living near an encampment, but right now, there's definitely a balance, a balance that the police department deals with, a balance that the city deals with. And that balance is the quality of life that an encampment brings to a neighborhood, coupled with the compassion of the plight of the homeless. Today, we are going to Forest Lane Park, and some of the difficulties that we have here is the fact that it is basically in two jurisdictions. One, it's the city of San Bruno's, and number two, it's embarked off the I-380 east on-ramp. So now you have a state, you have a state agency and you have a city agency. It's basically smack dab in the middle.
Just going to throw some of this? All right.
I'm Officer Sherry Campbell, and I've been an officer here in San Bruno for going on 15 years. And since the day I started, this particular male has been on the street experiencing homelessness. He has moved from camp to camp, consistently having the same challenges. He's been offered several services throughout those 15 years. He's making some progress now, but is still a few steps away from the coming house.
Life Moves, which they're a homeless outreach program, what they do is they come out, they bring everything from hygiene kits, to food vouchers, to water vouchers, to transportation vouchers. And their goal is to make sure people get long-term housing, and then also they're self-sufficient. And to you and I and people watching, self-sufficient might be something that we don't even think about, but for people who have lost everything in their lives, self-sufficiency is something that they need. And with Life Moves, who we're lucky enough to have a relationship with, they don't stop. Their heart's got to be this big because they do not stop. And a lot of times, they'll keep data, but literally, they will see people 60 to 70 to 80 times before something may or may not be done. Bottom line, what people have to realize is still a choice. It's a choice that people have to make to want to get.
It's a choice that people have to make to want to get help. And again, like we discussed earlier, there's reasons, personal reasons, why people don't want the assistance. They don't want the help because they don't trust people. But again, it's something the homeless person needs to adapt to. A lot of times, people say, just offer it to them. Give them a shelter. Well, because of that trust issue, they don't want to go there. People don't feel well enough to go to a doctor, and it's all about learning that trust, about trusting someone where they feel good about going to a doctor. They'll bring out street medicine, and street medicine will go ahead. They will take vitals. They will assist in any prescription medications if need be. But it's just a way to help them get, so that they're not sick, they're not spreading infectious diseases, and that they feel okay. I may have mentioned it before, but a lot of times, people, because they constantly move, they lose their driver's license, they lose their social security card, of which they need. So another thing that Life Moves offers is that they will literally take them down and bring them to the DMV and get them a driver's license. They will bring them to the social security office and get them their social security card. They will get them, as you saw earlier, street medication was here. But once they have that trust and they do entrust a doctor, they will bring them there and stay in the waiting room for them so that they have someone outside when they go ahead and come out, because they just, they need that sense of security or, you know, that advocate. So that's another thing Life Moves offers. Typically, we don't have this many entities helping us, but since a lot of the refuse is on the city street, we've got the streets to come out here, Public Works, and then when it's up into a park, we bring the Parks Department. We're back here at the encampment. Yesterday was a great day. We got rid of a lot of things, threw partnerships through our community. Unfortunately, what I found out through Life Moves today is that a couple of the homeless individuals did not make their appointment today. So we're kind of back down at square one. They are continuously working with them. We will continuously monitor the situation. And if there's any other things I can answer, or if you'd like to sit down and talk about this or anything else, please get ahold of me at the San Bruno Police Department. Thank you.
Again, just a presentation and update. No action before the council, but a significant issue for our community, and we just wanted to provide an update.
Thank you, City Manager. And before I turn it over to Councilmember Mason, I did want to thank staff, the Public Works, the police, the Life Moves, all those folks that were out there on the 23rd that have been out there before. Before the 23rd, I know that some staff went out to do some cleaning and didn't feel comfortable or needed to come back on the 23rd. And that's important, too. We need to know that our staff is comfortable in this task that they're trying to do in helping the community. But I did want to just, really, first of all, before turning it over to Councilmember Mason, thank staff for the presentation, but thank the staff that went out there and did that cleaning and tried to help out, and thank you. And Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I understand that it's a really delicate balancing act between the safety of the staff and the quality of life of the residents, and then obviously ensuring that we're treating the homeless population humanely. I do want to ask what the plan is, though, moving forward. I want to make sure that we don't let the encampment get to this place again. I know that I personally visited the encampment on a regular basis, and it did continue to get worse even with the cleanups. And I think that there does need to be a very, very clear expectation for the time being moving forward while we're, especially while we're in COVID, and there's more hesitation to move, to move anyone, actually.
Councilmember, we are beginning the abatement process that may result in a involuntary move of the encampment. Typically, what actually happens is sort of pre-COVID, when there are, the thresholds are met and there are significant public health and safety concerns, we go through the process, and there's a voluntary relocation. That may very well happen in this case, but we will continue to be compassionate. We are monitoring the accumulation of trash and debris. Right now, the encampment is scheduled for a bi-weekly cleaning cycle. We have not moved that up to a weekly cleaning cycle, but we will continue to monitor.
Right, thank you. And I think for the members of the public court watching, it's important to note that also, this site isn't just the homeless. There are people who are actually dumping garbage there, which is even more unfortunate because you already have the sanitation issue with those living there, and then on top of that, you have people taking advantage of dumping. So making it, I think, even more complex for the city to handle. So thank you for the update, and I'm glad to hear that there is a schedule moving forward.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the video that was put together. It really does shed a light for those who don't understand the process, what the city has done, the challenging the pieces. And I do, I do care. I care for everybody in that situation, right? I care for those who are struggling with their own demons and their own personal life issues. And, you know, there are a lot of people who live, you know, one paycheck away from being homeless themselves. But with all that said, you know, there's a cost to the city. So I know that originally, that the county and the CDC was sort of like, don't touch them. It's more of a concern to move them. But, you know, you look at that, and you drive by it, and you hear it, and you see the pictures. You've got a fear for employees and the community that live near there, and so I think it is just unacceptable. And I don't see, I understand the solution, where we're going to get out there twice a week and go and clean that, but we're just, we're continuing to allow a problem to exist, and it's not going away, and it's just getting greater. So how do we really stop it? And it's my understanding that, you know, in order to be homeless and to be allowed to be on the street, we don't have a place for you to live. So we do. We're giving them the ability to take a hand and to find a place, whether it's temporary or long-term, and they're not taking it. So then, there's all these concerns. I mean, let's imagine every single one of us, that this was next door to us, this was in our own backyard, where you have kids who now can't go out and see their friends and play, but they want to get on a bike and ride around the neighborhood. You're afraid of being able to go out and do anything? You're afraid of being able to go out in front of your own yard? Are they going to step on a needle? Are they going to step on some feces that were left behind? I mean, it's just all a nightmare. So I find it, you know, as much as we want it, I think we've been allowed, we've allowed this to continue to grow because we want to be compassionate, but where does it end? Because we want to be compassionate for people who spend millions of dollars on a home, to live in a neighborhood right next door to that, and work hard to be able to have the well-being and the safety of their own families. And I just, I think we need to do more. And, you know, I guess my other, so that's my comment, but my question would be, an additional question is, where's Caltrans part in this? And are they burdening some of the cost for this? And yes, I think we need to, you know, start with a voluntary process where they get to move on, or we start a process where we evict them from that location. And then the next question is, is how do we prevent them from coming back? You know, is there a fencing that we can put up to block off areas that, I know we've had a pizza place that's been vacant for many years, and so there's that parking lot, and, you know, what can we do to really deter this? For the residents in the neighborhood, the city, I know, has for years, worked on this neighborhood for many years. At one point, the park had barbecues, and we removed those because we knew that they were cooking there. And so, you know, what are all the things that we want to ensure that they don't encourage them to set up camp and to set up a home when you live next to your neighborhood? So I appreciate staff putting this presentation together, but I feel like we continue, we need to do more, and we need to find a way to eliminate that problem. It's just a lot of filth and a huge hazard, and I, too, am concerned, like most of our residents.
City Manager, did you have anything to, to the questions, or Councilmember Medina will be next?
So all the items that the council member mentioned about ways to prevent an encampment from reoccurring in that area, we will certainly work on fixing once the encampment is no longer there. Fix the fence that connects the city and the Caltrans property. Given the sort of small patch of area and the road network, it's really not a really good way to fence off that area of the park. And we, with regard to partnership with Caltrans, we have a partnership with them. But statewide, Caltrans is not moving homeless encampments and doing their regular cleanup schedule. And so, I can bring in the police chief to address that. I think he's in the room. But we can continue to work with them, we can continue to have conversations. But we will continue to address what is on city property and articulate the challenges that are posed by what is on Caltrans property.
Councilmember Medina.
That was a really nice video. It exposes and explains a lot. And our city, our neighborhood near there, and they have the compassion for people that are suffering through homelessness. It's just that they're also being subjected, not to just the encampment, but in over 15 emails from residents, besides the blight, the odors, the public drunkenness, drug use, people going up and down the street at night, fights, trespassing, verbal abuse and fear, the balance is out of whack. And I agree with what my colleagues have said. We have to figure out and to do something a little bit more. It's one thing to be homeless and to need a place, but the things that are happening in that neighborhood, we have to, we have to find a way to keep that from happening. And I know it's, it seems overwhelming at first, but a key word that I picked up in our city manager's comments was thresholds. So what are those thresholds that trigger something to go from that's acceptable? What's a specific guideline that should be followed to allow an encampment to be in What about if people are visiting without masks, then the whole point of limiting the exposures is gone? So at what point, I guess basically it's this, at what point are there consequences? We've asked before for a dumpster because there's a lot of labor involved with getting the backhoe and all of that, all expenses. There's a, there's a lot of workers there that are getting exposed to things that maybe if we know that it's going to be going on its way out, that we bring the dumpster until it's gone. Because will they use it? I don't know. Maybe they will. But we have to be prepared because they're going to come back. We've seen it over and over and over again. And I know this is just a presentation, but I understand the mayor has, has something on his comments about a homeless position on the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. The Ad hoc Homeless Advisory Committee, and maybe we can hear more about that, but I think we need to be more involved as a council. I understand staff doing all that they can, but I think we need some more additional guidance and some more discussion of what, what is going to be, what is legally allowed, and what can we actually do? Thank you.
City Manager, do you have any comments, or, because Councilmember Mason has her hand up?
I understand the council members' sentiments, and there's a lot in there. I think at a high level, what I know, the council knows, but the public should also know, is that being homelessness is not illegal. Sleeping in our city park is not illegal. And there's an increasing landscape of laws, case law, and protections for our unsheltered population. And so, there is not a specific threshold, and community complaints alone are not significant to remove an encampment. There needs to be documented public health and safety concerns in criminal activity. And one of the examples that I know in particular from a prior life is, individuals say they're using drugs, drugs, I mean, in their tent. That's their home. They're searching seizures, requirements just that apply to a homeless encampment that also, similar to what applies to someone within their own house. And so, oftentimes, it is very difficult for us to address the concerns that are raised by the community because there are legal considerations and case law that we need to follow to protect the city's interests. And so, at this time, I can't give you a precise threshold of this is acceptable, but this is not acceptable. But what it really is, is it's ensuring that there is a documented public health and safety concern that the city has observed, has documented, and has the necessary background and information where we can say, you know what? We have confirmed that this is posing a significant public health and safety concern. And unfortunately, that's heightened now in COVID-19 and with the CDC guidance. And so, we totally understand the quality of life implications of this encampment. And homelessness, homelessness is an extremely perplexing and challenging problem to solve. And there, we are extremely fortunate in San Mateo County to have the resources that we have to address this problem. The resources that this county has is, it's not the same in every other county, but that doesn't mean that people will avail themselves of that resource, and it still requires that intensive outreach, sometimes dozens or hundreds of contacts, or that outreach worker making contact with someone on the morning after a very cold night, and then they finally say, yes, I will avail myself of the services that you've offered. And so, it takes time, and it takes a lot of work, but there are success stories.
Councilmember Mason.
Thank you for that. I think I just want to make sure that we are talking about this particular encampment. We have other encampments that were mentioned, and I think that where I get concerned is where there is, there is clear, I think, the order, I should say, around shelter in place is pretty clear, that health and safety concerns can be addressed, and eviction is one of those ways to address them. And there's obviously a lot more legalese around it, and we don't have to get into that, but I think that that's where, for me, I get concerned, is that we are not couching every encampment under, you know, this idea that we don't want people moved, that it's, you know, it is their home, it's called shelter in place because we want people to remain where they are, we don't, and not everybody has a home. I understand all of that, and in compassion, it's all of that. But for me, I think where we need to really start getting aggressive is when you have nonstop traffic going through our residential neighborhoods into our parks, many of our parks, which were, whose playgrounds have been closed to our kids for months, but we're allowing, you know, people to come in, essentially trespass, create a nuisance. They are literally leaving urine-filled bottles, I've gotten pictures of this, on the street. To me, at some point, it becomes a health risk, there's a sanitation issue that is, that also is raised. It is a misdemeanor right now to not have a face covering. So I think that, I want to make sure that what we are doing is at least documenting what is happening vigorously. If it hasn't been done before, that it be done now, moving forward, because we have been receiving concerns around the been receiving concerns around this encampment as it has grown for months. And so while, again, I definitely want to be compassionate, but I also want to make sure that we are, we're addressing the issue and that we are talking to our residents who live directly across the street with little kids running around, because it's not, it's not a crime to be homeless. But at some point, we have to also be vigilant for the families that live there and that this becomes a true sanitation issue. Those pictures in the video, I think, are, are pretty clear. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any more hands up, and I just, you know, it, it does have a complexity because it's state and it's city. We could take care of our, our piece of land, and then they could just move. One of the, the, one of the persons in the video I have met before, and that was when he lived elsewhere in the community and has moved around. And he's personally told me he's not prepared for two to three years to want to seek the help, be off the street. Right, wrong, or indifferent? The thing is, you know, folks are, are trying to be hopeful. I know St. Bruno's does about fifty breakfasts in the morning. They used to have showers available, but that stopped at COVID. They have less folks that can stay there because of the spacing element. And they, they didn't have a lot that could, at maybe eight, now they're down to about five or so. And on the state level, you know, with governor's order, my understanding is from captain, the captain of CHP, which is their jurisdiction, they have to validate that it becomes an extreme emergency and reaches a level now that has been dictated by the state. And that, then they have to have it go to his boss in Vallejo, and that boss in Vallejo has to have it go to Sacramento to a three-star in their command structure to sign off for these type of things. So this process has elongated everything. And so in essence, I think all of the colleagues are saying, too, compassion, yes, do we have a heart? Yes, has the neighborhood been very tolerable, tolerant? Yes. But I think what it gets to is, we're unfortunately, we thought we probably wouldn't be sheltered in place at this point. Maybe we'd be seeing July and August, and we, we may be seeing this to the end of the year, potentially, if not longer, who knows? And I think that's the thing, where do you strike a balance of, of doing the right thing, but then at the same time, understanding what it does to, not just here, I know it's on Forest Lane, but there's other places. Was it Walgreens today, getting hand sanitizer? And there was a lady who stopped me about somebody who brought it up under public comment about another area. And so it is not just there, and so we have to try to balance that. I don't know, City Manager, if you have anything, I'll, I'm, I'm going to go to Councilmember Davis and then see if City Manager, if you want to conclude with anything, and then we'll move on. Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, just one final comment. I mean, clearly, it's not one or three people living there because the amount of garbage that got accumulated is much greater than that. And I think what we're seeing, too, is just it's become a dumping ground. And that area is no different from any, of many areas in the lower part of San Bruno that people just think that they can dump in San Bruno. So, you know, one of the things we can do as a council, because you, because, you know, that comment was made, too, is really a proactive approach against illegal dumping. You know, leaving notices where people think it's just okay to dump a mattress because I'm moving and leave it outside in apartment complaints. You know, we have really kind of an epidemic in San Bruno, and it, it's been going on for many years. So we need to be proactive, get the laws out there, the rules out there, leave notices, do more notification about an illegal process to educate the community. And we can all do our part in picking up garbage along the way where we see it. It's not uncommon for me to go out and grab a garbage bag and pick up garbage where I see it. You know, I've been doing that for years. So, you know, maybe that's another thing we as a community help out our city, where, you know, with things, with short staffed, is you see it, try to be part of the solution. And we can do, like I said, as a city, start notifying, leave notification out there, drop notifications at properties where garbage is being dumped. And this particular site is, you see garbage, you just want to add to it. If I, I guarantee you have a dumpster in front of my house, somebody would drive by and put garbage into it because it's a free-for-all. So we just, we have to stop it so we can't contribute to the additional mess that it provides. Thank you.
Thank you. If nothing else from City Manager, then we'll go on to our consent. City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, this is Ryan.
I apologize. Let's go to the, the, the person who's been quiet, but thank you for being there. And yes, Chief Johansson.
Yeah, sorry, I'll be brief, but there were a couple of things I wanted to touch on that were mentioned, just to kind of clear some things up and clarify. First of all, I hope that nothing in the video or in any of this presentation came across to imply that there's a feeling that the residents in this area have not been compassionate. I think quite the opposite. The level of patience and compassion being demonstrated by the people who are dealing with this every single day is, is really quite staggering. So I, I think that it was more in a, in the spirit of trying to, to shed a little bit of light on what it means when we use these catchphrases like that it's not illegal to be homeless. It's kind of important to understand the way that the courts have been interpreting that, that phraseology and what they're saying that it means. And essentially, the courts are putting us on notice in law enforcement that it means that any kind of enforcement we conduct that is disparate towards the, the homeless community, or that is not equally enforced across the board, but is sort of, on the surface appears to be used as a tool to stop homelessness or combat homelessness, is, is not lawful and is not something that, that should be engaged in. And, and this really makes things fairly difficult when it comes to addressing things that to the average citizen they see in their neighborhood and want the police torment to address, like dumping and, and quality of life issues. It doesn't mean that it's legal for them to do this, but the courts have sort of put us on notice, saying, look, if you're not widespread traveling throughout the community, citing and arresting all citizens for these types of offenses, and you're mostly enforcing it against the homeless population, then we're going to take exception to that sort of enforcement and determine that it is not fair and is disparate. They have further ruled and, and put us on notice that any enforcement that, that puts a homeless person in a position where they don't have a choice because they are homeless is not okay. And, and this is where we get into trouble with things like urinating in public and defecating in public and dumping trash in public, because the argument comes across that they don't have a home and they have no choice. And while these things are, are, you know, ridiculous to us as we're trying to combat these issues, and certainly if they're, they're in my community and on my street, I, I would feel very similar to how the folks in this neighborhood feel, these are the challenges we're dealing with and trying to think outside the box as to how we deal with the problem. And it really does put us in a pretty tight spot. So we, we try to follow these protocols. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, what, where do we draw the line? I think the reality is that there has been a bit of a line drawn, and we have a pretty clear process for how we move forward with forced movement or removal of these encampments. And we do so within the law, and we've done so multiple times in the city. The, the curveball of COVID and some sort of conflicting health orders and some other entities that we normally partner with, like Caltrans and CHP bowing out of the equation, have just made it a little bit more difficult to navigate those waters in our current time. That being said, I think that the City Manager made it pretty clear, and if not, I'll, I'll reiterate here, that we are moving forward with that process with this encampment because it is abundantly obvious that this presents a health and safety risk to the neighborhood and to the community as a whole that, that simply cannot be tolerated. At the same time, right, it's important to note that our whole focus is long-term housing, because if we can't get there, this encampment is the, the same one that started on White Way, if we can recall how much push there was to move that, and the same one that was across from the public library for a period of time. And so they literally moved from place to place, even when we go through this exhaustive and potentially liability exposing process of, of evicting or moving them, abating the the encampment, really nothing prohibits them from moving to another location and creating the same plight. So it's just very, very challenging, and I just wanted to express from the police department's perspective how much I appreciate the patience of the community and of council, albeit it is understandably wearing thin, and just know that we are racking our brains day in and day out to try and combat this, but to do so in a way that protects the city and the interests of all those involved.
Thank you, Chief.